Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, April 12th, 2022 to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. We'll begin our meeting by asking Pastor Edwin Davis from Harvest Temple Ministries to come forward to give our invocation, and then Commissioner Harvey will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Davis, please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we thank you this morning for this opportunity that we have to come together. We thank you for the board. We thank you for all that are taking part in this meeting today. We thank you for just giving us the grace and the mercy to be here right now. We pray that you would grant us with wisdom as we am also employ us with your guidance today. As each significant item of the agenda is discussed along with its meaningful dialogue, we pray, dear Lord God, that you would help us to maintain that unity, that unity which is necessary, as we work together towards promoting progress, success, and growth, and the well-being of our county as a whole. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ's name, and amen.
Amen.
Put me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you, Commissioner Harvey. We'll recess the regular Board of County Commission meeting. Oh, excuse me. I'll reconvene the Board of County Commission meeting, and gentlemen, the first item of business is approval of the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of the March 8th and the regular workshop meeting of March 8th.
Okay, we've got a proper motion and a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, before I move into the port, Commissioner Adams-Zack is just going to be a little late. He had to stop by, get the prescription, I believe, so he should be here in just a few minutes. We'll move into, we'll recess the meeting and then convene the Port Authority meeting. Commissioners, the first item is item A, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of Port Authority, March 8th, and the Port Authority Workshop, March 8th, as stated in our agenda.
Shug it. Okay, got a proper motion and a proper second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, before we move down to item B, I would like to recognize State Representative Bobby Payne and Ms. Leota Wilkinson, his legislative assistant, is here this morning, and I'm going to ask Bobby to come up and say just a few words about the legislation that he pushed through along with Senator Perry, but Bobby, we're going to give you all the credit today, and thank you so much for your work for the last six years, seven years, in the legislature for everything that you've done for your district and for Putnam County. And let's give Bobby a hand because he truly has been a champion.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, good morning. Audience, good morning. It's good to see all of you. Thank you for that. You know, of the bills I've run throughout the six years, this was one that was a very pleasurable bill because if we talk about the background and the history of maritime opportunities in the community in Putnam, we know raising the Shands Bridge is at the core of what where we've been cut off for years. We know the Shands Bridge will be raised as a part of the interbeltway that's being done up in the Green Cove area. So it was a pleasure to work with the county, with the consultants, to meet with the Jacksport Authority, to meet with the Jacksport Council. I actually attended their event that night in Tallahassee for their legislative day, the appropriation staff, the Senate President, the Speaker, as well as speak to the Governor about the fact that it would create a great opportunity for us in Putnam County. And so without spending a lot of time talking about the issue, Senator Perry and I were certainly pleased to make sure this is a bill that we took to heart and know that it's integral to our opportunities for great economic development in the community. From here, we have to make sure, once we get, we get the bill signed, first of all, by the Governor, and that we become a member of the Seaports Economic Development Council, we have to assure that we are doing the right things viability-wise to make sure that we have the opportunity for good, good industry growth in that area. I think it's well-defined by our consultant with intermodal opportunities, with highway transportation opportunities, potentially with some greater rail opportunities, and in use of perhaps some airport opportunities, it will be a good viable economic opportunity for Putnam County. So thank you for that. It was a pleasure to run the bill, and I'm honored to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. I'd also like to recognize Administrator Suggs and Sam Sullivan, who's not here, but Administrator Suggs is, and staff for assisting Legislature Payne with this bill and moving it forward. So I think it's going to be a real, real promising future for Putnam County with this port. So thank you so much, Bobby. Commissioners, we'll move down to item B, Administration Engagement of Trans-South Systems for Port Infrastructure Development Grant. Administrator Suggs?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you. And just to echo Representative Payne, it has been a pleasure to, to support this project in Tallahassee as well as here locally, and we couldn't have asked for a better team of representatives up in Tallahassee as well as here at Putnam County to get this as far as we've gotten so far. But this morning, we're here about a particular grant and hiring a consultant to help us with the grant. The Port Infrastructure and Development Program is a program that's designed to help us with financial assistance and grants through systems like Port Authorities and Commissions. As you know, we're looking at the, the port itself and the infrastructure of the port. The port is over 60 years old, and there's little known about its construction as well as its life and expectancy that we have currently. And so we're looking at getting a, a grant through the Port Infrastructure and Development Program to help us look at some of the issues that we may have with the port and things that we may need to improve upon. The grant is extremely technical and requires a lot of expertise in that, that field, and it's really expertise that your current county staff just doesn't have. And so we've reached out to some firms about getting some quotes. Trans System is currently working with us now, but this will require a separate contract to move this forward with them. With this, in front of you this morning is a request to fund this contractual agreement for, I believe it's $27,780 to move this project forward, and that's the request of the board this morning. We're very fortunate that we've got those folks that are currently helping us with Trans Systems because of the, the makeup of their organization and the background of the folks that actually are working in that organization gives, puts Putnam County in a very positive and unique position to be successful with this type of grant program. So the staff is requesting that the board approve the $27,780 this morning to hire Trans Systems to perform this grant opportunity and paperwork for Putnam County.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I really just want to say how pleased I am. I got a reporter the other day from Lakeview who said, "You got a port in Putnam County?" I said, "Yes, and we're going to have a better port as we move forward." So it's exciting. And Representative Payne, thank you for your work on that. Even in Tallahassee, I was even questioned about, "Port in Putnam County?" I said, "Well, how do you think all the oranges rode up and down the river years and years ago?" You know, and the cypress trees. So, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this item.
Would that be the two items requested?
Yeah.
Second?
Yes. I make a motion on both items, Mr. Chairman, as presented in our agenda.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. So it passes. Now, we do have Mr. Rick Farron with us. Rick, would you like to come up and just say a few words?
Doesn't like putting him on the spot.
He looked like he was prepared.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the County Commission, thank you very much for, and I will be brief. I think, I think Terry did a great job sort of paraphrasing what this is all about. There are several, probably four or five pertinent USDOT, U.S. Department of Transportation, what they call discretionary grant programs that are out there. The most applicable to your situation right now with your port is the, what we call the PID. And as Terry was correct, it's called the Port Infrastructure Development Program. And what it's all about and what they want to do is they want to help ports in the United States enhance the mobility and the efficiency and the safety with which people and cargo move to the port, through the port, and out of the port. So that fits because they also have a portion of the grant program that is available for planning. And that's your state right now, is you're in the planning state, really planning, what are you going to do? What are you going to build? What sorts of property do you want to use? How do you want to utilize what I call your organic assets? And that's your rail, your proximity to I-75, to I-95, great roadway connections, et cetera. So that's what this study will look at. This study that we are, for which we are applying for a grant through PID is what we're calling a Port Development Plan. And it will focus predominantly on those physical structures, the infrastructure and the facilities that need to be built so that your port can reach its full potential. So that's what we're, we're in the process of doing. This grant, as Terry indicated, is quite technical. We have a wonderful staff at Trans Systems that has a great track record with these grants. We'll be putting this grant together, and we will be submitting this grant on the 16th of May. So it's a pretty short fuse, it's what we call a short burn. Needless to say, we're already getting organized and we're doing the preliminary work right now. But once the contract is signed, I will have three or four people working almost full-time on this grant to have it submitted on the 16th of May.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Turner, do you have a question?
Yes, a quick question, if I may, Rick.
Yes, sir.
The, it looks like we're going to be successful in the purchase of 15 acres that's basically just across the drive, Port Comfort Drive. I think it's not Port Comfort, uh, Bar-
Comfort Road.
Comfort Road, across the road. So would that 15 acres in any way be involved in this planning that we're fixing to do?
Yes, sir. Because part of this plan is to look at properties that are county-owned and properties that might be in the future county-owned. And what would you do with those? What, what would, what purposes would they fulfill in the development of a port? But that's part of the plan for which we are requesting grant funding.
I just wanted to make sure that was going to be part of it because it looks like we are going to be successful in obtaining that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Any individuals wishing to speak on Port Authority items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. We'll move down to general discussion. Commissioners, any, any things you want to talk about, about in Port Authority?
I have nothing additional.
Okay, all right. Seeing none, I'll adjourn the Port Authority, and I'll reconvene the regular Board of County Commission meeting, and we'll move down to item A, which is Presentations, and I will ask the Honorable Representative Bobby Payne to- -to come up again, and he's going to give us an update on legislative appropriations and just briefly on FDEP bio-solids.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, a pleasure to be here. I wanted to just take an opportunity to run through a few of the things that happened during the legislative session specifically to Putnam County. And, you know, we get a very successful two years, especially this year, in legislative session. As a result of the policies that the governors imparted over the last few years, Florida's been open. We've had tourism. Our revenues have been astounding. Revenues in the state have been, has been great, so that we've passed a budget this past year of $112.1 billion. To highlight some of that funding for Putnam County, I want to run through some of those areas, and I'll just run through them as line items. We appropriated $400 million to, $400 million to the Department of Economic Opportunity to expand broadband internet services to underserved areas through grants for installation and deployment infrastructure of broadband services. So for Putnam County, we know that is, is a critical component. We've already seen some expansion in South Putnam with Comcast. We know that's, this past year exacerbated those issues for broadband opportunities through business and schooling and telecommunications. Putnam County is scheduled, once this is signed, I have to leave that caveat there by the Governor, Putnam County School, Construction Academy, $523,000. West Putnam County Fire Station at $2 million. South Putnam Drainage, $560,000. North Putnam Drainage, $2 million. Canor Road 210 Bridge Rehab, $2 million. In the City of Palatka, sewer, main, and manhole improvements, $2.015 million. They just received a Community Development Block Grant of $5.3 million in the City of Palatka. The total there is over $9 million for, for Putnam County. In addition, if we add in transportation, education, and some other infrastructure costs, Putnam County will see a benefit of $59 million this year. As the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee for the last two years, I had the honor of putting together a statewide tax package. That tax package, fortunately this year because the great revenues, the Speaker gave me a lot of latitude on the tax package. So I want to run through that for the citizens of Putnam County and for those, those who are watching. This year, we had what was considered the largest tax package ever in the history of the state of Florida. It will amount to tax exemptions and return of dollars to taxpayers throughout the state of over a billion dollars in two years. First of the four tax holidays was back to school, July 25th through August the 7th. Disaster Prepariness, May 28th through June 10th. Freedom Florida Week, July 1st through July 7th. That's a, a tax-free week we started last year and will continue this year. And then this year, after talking with numerous folks in the community and understanding that not all kids will go to college, most will, most may go into trades, we, we passed a tax package for skilled workers that involves from September 3rd through September 9th during Labor Day, Labor Day week, that will give benefits and returns for tool sales. All of those items are listed specifically what they apply to on state websites, and we'll have them on our, on our website locally as well. Additionally, we passed a baby and toddler clothes and child diaper extension and exemption for one year. We passed a gas tax for the month of October, which amounts to about $200 million. So you get tax exemption opportunities in the state of Florida in October. A lot of discussion as to why we didn't do that for a year. That, that number was astronomical, and we felt like we wanted Floridians to get the benefit of the tax package as opposed to those who are driving in the state. May and October are the least visited, that's our least visited months for the state for visitors, so it will go more directly to Floridians. We increased the property tax exemption for widows, widowers, blind, and disabled persons from $500 to $5,000, and that's something that the property appraisers, especially Tim Parker and I, have talked about for years. So we're glad to get that done. Additionally, a request of CFO Patronus, we passed impact-resistant windows, doors, and garage doors for two years for those that are remodeling homes or building homes to create greater resiliency in the state. We did not address the business rent tax this year, simply because we passed a bill last year called Wayfair Bill that put the effort to take tax dollars on internet sales and apply those to the unemployment compensation tax. Once that unemployment compensation tax trust fund is brought back to par, which is about $3 to $4 billion, then we reduce the commercial rent tax to 2.0. It's currently 5.5 with the intent to formally abolish that for those business owners and those that have lease, lease opportunities. In the tax package, also, we had a few of the things. I've already spoken about the, about the Seaports Bill. Certainly excited about that. And then I wanted to just make a few comments on what, what's in the community and what we've heard for the last year. I know that Commissioner Pickens and I and Commissioner-
Adams-Zack.
Adam Zach and I, we're in a forum with those folks in South Putnam. But I just want to speak to the application process through FDEP. So the application process runs like this. An applicant submits an application and required documentation with a permit fee. The DEP will review within 30 days of that submittal to determine the completeness. That's currently the phase we're in now. If complete, a request for additional information is prepared and sent. In the case of the BioSolids applicant in South Putnam, they did not have enough information. They had to submit additional information. Each time that information is requested and sent, it delays the process. Within that timeframe, public comments can be received at any time, really during the process, and through conversations through DEP, we, they have requested continuously additional information. So that's step two. Then step third, step three would be, and the terminology is confusing a little bit. Once the application, the draft permit application is deemed complete, then the applicant must publish a notice of complete application. If requested or there is determination to be a heightened public interest, a public meeting can be held, and we know that a public meeting will be held. After 14 days of the notice being published, there will be determination for a public meeting. If a public meeting is held within 30 days after the meeting, the draft permit and notice of intent is prepared and sent to the permitting. That's the notice of intent. That's not the final permit. If there is not a public meeting, the draft permit will be prepared along with a notice of intent to issue, and we know there will be public meetings. We've already seen that request in many cases from, from members of South Putnam, rightfully so. Once the notice of intent is published, the public then again has the opportunity to request an administrative hearing within 14 days. Hearing requests are reviewed by DEP in the Office of General Counsel. So what I'm trying to illustrate is there's numerous steps in this process. If a hearing request is deemed merred by DEP in the Office of General Counsel, it is referred to the Department of Administrative Hearings for a date and a location to be scheduled. If there's no public hearing, the permit can be issued if a decision is made by a hearing officer and the permit then approved effective or denied. So those are the steps for BioSolids application. In South Putnam, we're a long way from, from completing that process. I have spoken to FDEP almost monthly, sometimes more, on the process to find out where the status is. We know that with the new Secretary of Sean, Sean Hamilton is our new Secretary of DEP, good friends with him, we're on top of what the BioSolids application process is. I feel like after talking to them this week, they, they illustrated that they would not have the draft permit, just the draft permit done by the middle of summer. So that is the process for BioSolids application. I think there are some concerns in the community that it will move through without an extensive review. I'm here to tell you that part of my requirement is to make sure they have an extensive review. That's why I speak to them so often. So if that, I'm done unless you have a few questions.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Representative Payne. I don't have any questions concerning that. I just have an accolade to give you. Eight years ago, Governor Scott appointed me, and I inherited two projects from the SCOP and Scrap Program. One was a road called Holloway Road. Basically, if you don't know where Holloway Road is, it's a cross from QI Robert's School, and it goes down to the lake, but basically encompasses a national or state forest. We had two bridges that are failing in Putnam County, and one was a Barden Bridge, and one was County Road 310. And County Road 310 is over there by Lake Akla Waha. So to make a long story short, it didn't make sense for us to pave that road. So we went to Representative Payne, and we said, "Let us move that money over to Barden Bridge and to County Road 310." And, you know, you have to, you have to have friends, and Representative Payne has made friends, and, but we had a solid plan. So we were able to move that money over to save the taxpayers of Putnam County a lot of money because when it comes to bridges, it's expensive. And not only that, Representative Payne mentioned today $2 million that the Governor, it's on the appropriation. Representative Payne realized that we were short on County Road 310. Now, if we don't get that money, it comes out of our general reserves, but you're fighting hard. And I just want people to know, it, it's about relationships, and it's about our, our representative being right here who drives these roads, who understands the problem. And, and I can't give you enough credit for helping us do that because it's, it would have been difficult if we wouldn't have been able to do that. So thank you, sir, for that, for that work you did on our behalf.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. It's, it's a pleasure. I mean, that's what we run for office for. That's what we do to improve the lives of our communities. And it is about relationships. It's about building respect and trust. And through those, through those opportunities, we've had a great opportunity to do that over the last six years. I expect the next two years to be brighter for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rawls?
I appreciate everything that you've done for the county. Talking specifically on the BioSolids, one thing that's frustrating with this whole event is that it almost feels like we're hamstrung by legislative action. I would encourage you and your fellow representatives and senators to take a look at the ability, or have given the ability to the individual counties to be able to determine what, if anything, is brought into their county. The Daily News had an article that was, it was a follow-up to the death of that child that fell in the septic tank. And they said that, you know, their recommendation is that septic tanks should be pumped every three to five years, and they're estimating north of 24,000 tanks, and it, probably an average of 1,000 each, which is probably very close. We have a lot of affluent that we have to deal with, a lot of BioSolids that we'll have to deal with on our own. So I would, I would encourage you to take this message back and allow the citizens of each county to be able to rule themselves and not be influenced by other forces. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for those comments.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, okay. Commissioner Turner?
I would be remiss in not joining my fellow commissioners and thanking you for the good that you do for Putnam County. The, but I'd really like to thank you for coming here today and trying to clear up some of the misinformation on this BioSolids issue because it seems like that quite a bit of the information on the street is not accurate information. So trying to clear some of that up today will, will be a big help for people involved in this issue. So thank you for coming today.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to make sure that based on Commissioner Rawls' comments, that the policy that was put in place a few years ago, and I won't speak much about the issue because there is litigation, was that BioSolids was a greater interest to the state because the inability with lack of BioSolids rules and regulations previous to 2020 and 29, or 2020 and 2021 when rules ratified, ratification. So it's a greater interest to the state. We're going to have BioSolids development. Without the Clean Waterways Act and the ratification of the bill last year, there was not a, a great deal of permitting that was required to put BioSolids in certain areas. BioSolids application is appropriate in certain areas, just like septic tanks are appropriate in certain areas. Along waterways, along runoff, it's not appropriate. So we felt like it was a greater responsibility for the state and the Department of Environmental Protection to take on that responsibility than put the burden on each county. And so we, we pushed it into a larger progression for the state to have requirements through DEP for nutrient management plans, for best management practices and monitoring, as opposed to try to put it on smaller counties who don't often have the resources to, to address the funding. With regards to moratorium, the moratorium exists prior to, to November of 2019. So if, if people are blaming the County Commission for that responsibility, I'll take that bullet because it's not your responsibility. It's the responsibility of the state. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Let's give him a hand. Okay, moving forward, I would like to recognize the Honorable Carl Flag, former Mayor of Palatka and former County Commissioner. Carl, where you'll stand, let's give him a hand.
Okay, we'll move down to item B, National Healthcare Decisions Day Proclamation. That day is April 16th. And as I sit before you as the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, it's truly an honor to be able to recognize different groups that perform various services for Putnam County, but none so much as community hospice and then Haven Hospice, who we'll recognize at the second meeting of the month. This one is special to me because of the two people, two of the three people that are here I know very well. Ms. Birdie Allender and her husband Danny and her brother-in-law John Dale, we grew up together, went to high school together. Bonnie's mother-in-law is, excuse me, Birdie's mother-in-law is the late Bonnie Allender, who was at least a two-term County Commissioner for District One and represented us quite well. well. And their son, John Allender, is a lieutenant firefighter for Putnam County. So they have stayed home, and they continue to give back. It's just really a family tradition. Mr. Rodney Phillips is a son of, grandson of Vic Nickerson. I was a rotarian, a young rotarian back in the eighties with his grandfather, and he emulated service. He was involved with the Red Cross, and really anything that was good for South Putnam and Putnam County. And Rodney had, Rodney has continued that. We are rotarians in the Crescent City Rotary Club. We just did a little fish fry last week to just kind of keep catfish kind of going. And it's just an honor to work with you. So it's a truly honor. I've asked Commissioner Harvey to read this proclamation, so I've got to ask Birdie and Rodney to come forward, and we'll present this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, audience. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-35, National Healthcare Decision Day. Whereas National Healthcare Decision Day is recognized across the country, on April 16th, it is designed to inspire, educate, and empower the public and providers about the importance of advanced care planning, advanced care planning, to raise public awareness of the need to plan for healthcare decisions, especially those related to end-of-life care and medical decision-making, when patients are unable to speak for themselves, and to encourage the specific use of advanced directives to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas healthcare and community organizations across Florida State are assisting people to plan for future healthcare decisions, in the event they are unable to make their own medical decisions, and to encourage the use of advanced directives to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas a significant percentage of Putnam County residents have not yet prepared for healthcare decisions in times of crisis, or and/or at the time end of their life, had not had the important conversation with their families, loved ones, and their healthcare providers, and documented those decisions. And whereas it is likely that a significant reason for the significant percentage is that there is both a lack of knowledge and considerable confusion in the public about advanced care planning and advanced directives. And whereas, one of the principal goals of the National Healthcare Decision Day is to encourage physicians and their care teams, medical groups, hospitals and health systems, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, continuing care retirement communities, hospices, and community organizations to participate in a statewide effort to provide clear and consistent information to the public about the advanced care planning. And whereas, community hospice and palliative care of North Central Florida and other healthcare organizations and community groups have endorsed this event and are committed to educating the public about the importance of discussing healthcare choices and executing advanced directives. And whereas, a COVID-19 pandemic makes advanced care planning even more important with every age group being impacted and eighty, 840,000, 840,000 deaths and counting in the United States attributed to the virus. Whereas, as a result of the month of April 2022 being recognized as National Healthcare Decision Month, and April 16th, 2022, as a National Healthcare Decision Day, more citizens will have conversations about their healthcare decisions, more citizens will execute advanced directives to make their wishes known, and fewer families and healthcare providers will have to struggle with making difficult healthcare decisions in absence of guidance from the patient. Now therefore, through the authority vested in me by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, do I hereby proclaim, April 22nd is National Healthcare Decision Month, with April 16th, 2022, as a National Healthcare Decision Day, to encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes, and their, with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activity and programs in Putnam County, done, ordered, adopted, this twelfth day of 2022. Mr. Chairman, I move this proclamation forward.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and could be saying aye?
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Proclamation passes. Congratulations.
It's community hospice's goal to reach everyone in the county. We've been trying to reach out to church groups, libraries. Rodney just did a group at the library in Crescent City. People just don't realize how important it is. We never know when we're not going to be able to make our own decisions. I mean, none of us are guaranteed tomorrow, but we just never know what's going to happen. It be a heart attack, an automobile accident, COVID, whatever it may be, you've got to have your wishes in writing, and you need to have those difficult discussions with your families, so that they know exactly what you want. Anyone over the age of 18 should have an advanced care planning, and this is something that community hospice does free of charge. We'll do one-on-one in the home with families, we'll do groups. There's anything that, anything we can do to reach this county and get everyone with advanced care plannings done for their families and their loved ones, and of all ages, any 18 and over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Rodney, you want to say anything?
I'm never short for words. He knew that. I'm just privileged to serve Putnam County, and as, as Birdie just mentioned, we have done several programs recently, trying to educate on advanced care planning. I've done it in several different counties. I serve all up along the 100 corridor, so there's several counties that we've been able to do this in. And as we, as we educate these families, a lot of times, what happens is there, there's conversations that happen where families come, become tighter and closer together through this conversation, and you got to really think that that's going to be an awful time in anyone's life, when you have to make that decision of, okay, I know that my days are numbered, and I need to make a proper arrangement here. We plan everything else in our lives. We plan, you know, we go to school, we get educated, we plan for our retirement, we, people plan funerals, but the one thing that we forget to plan for is who is going to speak for me when I can't speak for myself? People like to shelve this conversation and think it's never going to happen. They, you know, there's that saying that denial's not a river in Egypt. So we all have a timestamp, you know? The good Lord knows when it is, we don't. So if we don't plan for those events that we know are going to happen, and we put them on the shelf and never think that it's ever going to happen to us, because somehow we are impenetrable to time, then that's not the case. We have to always think that we bring these families closer together, we have those hard conversations with them, they learn about hospice services, they learn about palliative care services, and it just makes that transition so much easier. So it's a wonderful tool to use as we start to look at what end-of-life really looks like. It helps the families along the way with bereavement, and it also puts ease and care of mind to the people that are going through that situation. So we applaud you guys for recognizing us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
May, may I say something?
Yes. Commissioner Harvey?
Last night, we were having a conversation, I was at an event, and Mr. Racket was there, you know, Federal Point, and the work we used to do out there together. And one thing that probably didn't get mentioned today when we talked about families is the children that are left behind. And, you know, to know that mom and dad wanted this done and this directive made their life a lot easier in some cases. I didn't get to have that choice with my mom, when she passed away. And, you know, you kind of wonder, I was very young back then, but I would have liked to have known a lot more. But back then, it was like, okay, your mom's dying, go, go away and come back another day. Don't mean that ugly, it's just, that's the way it was back then. But today, I'm glad it's on the forefront. And we were discussing that, those, that camp good, good hope that we used to do out there, and all the work, and the silliness that we did, and the fun we had. But at the end of the day, we impacted people's lives, and that's what hospice does. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Mr. Rawls?
Rodney, Rotary a couple of years ago, somebody came in and did a presentation on the Conversation Project, and I just looked it up, and it's still a viable website. It, it got me to thinking at the time about that, and then it got put on the shelf. And then last week, my wife and I were talking to our attorney about a lawsuit that we're involved with, and I, I brought up my mother-in-law, and then happened to think about my wife and I, you know, so it is a very important conversation. It's a very difficult conversation when you start going through it, but we are taking the steps to get our last wills and testament written. We want to have a living will, we want to have, you know, everything put in place ahead. And a lot of people think when they have a do-not-resuscitate order, that that stands in place of a living will, and it really doesn't. And even if you have a will, it still has to be probated. If you don't have a will, it just takes even longer and really hurts the family. So I definitely see the value in it, encourage it for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, you get on, Paul? You get on reading the proclamation? Okay. Okay, we'll move down to item C, Alicia Kolesky, the Sheriff's Office, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So I'll ask her to come up, and probably a group, maybe the sheriff and Colonel Wells. And I've asked Commissioner Adams Act to read this proclamation.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-31, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10th to 16th, 2022. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our public safety personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Putnam County Sheriff's Office Emergency Communicator, Communication Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators, also known as 911 dispatchers, are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the Putnam County Sheriff's Office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each 911 dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners declares the week of April 10th through the 16th of 2022 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Putnam County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, done, ordered, and adopted this 12th day of April 2022. Chairman, I so move.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Adams Act, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, could say aye?
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Proclamation passes. Congratulations.
As we celebrate National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, nobody ever wishes to experience a trauma that accompanies a life-threatening emergency. And I don't know of anyone that has ever woken up and hoped to suffer through some type of an emergency situation. Nevertheless, the world we all live in is not so forgiving. People suffer through heart-wrenching, emotional, and traumatic events every day. I'm personally comforted knowing that our communications officers are always available, swiftly directing resources and giving instruction in lifesaving measures. It takes a special strength and resilience to do what our emergency communicators do every day. Every day, I see our operators take control of serious and sometimes life-threatening situations using just a telephone and a radio as their only tools. They listen to people in distress, yet I see and hear them remain composed, focused, and compassionate. I have the pleasure of working with some of the most awesome and fearless communications officers I've ever seen. You're all heroes who wear a headset as your super suit. Regardless of your tenure in this industry, I can assure you, you've made a difference in someone's life. Thank you all for your dedication to such an honorable calling. Thank you.
I'm Captain Alicia Kolesky. I manage the 911 center for the sheriff. Just a few things I wanted to talk about, about the communication center. Putnam County Dispatch Center is staffed with Putnam County's first, first responders. Without these individuals, the job here and across the nation, public safety would not be able to respond as efficiently and effectively as they do to emergency calls. We are the only location that answers 911 calls in Putnam County. Those calls are received and processed and dispatched there in the, in the dispatch center at the sheriff's office. Putnam County implemented text to 911 a couple of years ago, and it is an integral piece of our plan to respond to incidents on school campuses throughout the county. So in Putnam County, you can text 911 if you can't make a phone call. Our communication center is staffed with state-certified 911 dispatchers, just like law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, EMTs. We have to take a state exam and pass that exam to be employed. Last year, we received approximately 55,000 911 calls and processed nearly 100,000 dispatched CAD calls. We're employed by the sheriff's office, however, our customers are all citizens in Putnam County, just as well as the public safety services we provide dispatch for, to include the municipalities. We're extremely short-staffed, much the same as many other county offices right now. And while we celebrate National Public Safety Telecommunications Week every year, we felt this was a perfect time to speak more publicly about those voices on the other end of the phone, who are dedicated to providing the best service they can to the citizens of Putnam County. With me today, I have Corporal Clarissa Fleming-Yose.
Yes.
Sergeant, Sergeant Katrina Young, Lieutenant Cindy Jordan, and Corporal, Corporal Zach Horn. All of these folks live and grew up in Putnam County. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rawls, you have a comment?
I'm going to show my age here. When I moved to Putnam County in 1988, I worked for the fire department. We did not have 911. And because I was a rookie on my shift, if anybody called in sick or took off time, typically a rookie got assigned to radio duty, and we were the dispatcher. And I can tell you that I wouldn't trade places for all the money in the world. You live in a dungeon, there's no windows in your building, it's a very difficult life, it's a very difficult job, just because of the environment, the stresses that come along with it. You do get emotionally attached to the person on the phone, and you take that home with you, and you wonder what happened at the end, because you lose contact after the ambulance or the scene is cleared, and you really don't know what the outcome is. But I, for one, understand where you're coming from. I really hope that we can work on getting more revenue for the county to be able to get salaries more in line with where they need to be, and be able to help you guys in your situation. But I thank you for everything you do. I know the people that are on the, on the radio do, because sometimes that's all you have to talk to. I just, thank you very much.
Give one more hand.
Are we going this way?
Hey, Allison's in charge.
Yeah, if anybody hadn't figured that out yet, it's slow.
All right, here we go. Smile, one, two, three.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you all coming yesterday.
Twenty-seven years.
Wow.
Well.
Thank you.
Sheriff Deloach will be presenting a lifesaving award. I had the pleasure of going to the Palaca Radio Station yesterday and saying a few words about the county and really about our agenda and what we're gonna go through today. And I did make the comment that we were gonna have a couple of proclamations, but also we're gonna be recognizing employees of Putnam County, which we're about to do, and then Clerk of Court Matt Reynolds will also do that in item E. But I made the comment that from the constitutional officers to the Board of County Commissioners, we really have tremendous employees working for this county, and I'm truly honored to be a commissioner working along with you. So with that said, Gator Deloach, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we go through this award, this one is of particular significance to me, and I think that will, the reasons for that will be immediately recognizable by everyone. So without any further ado, Colonel, if you'd like to begin.
Sheriff, thank you, Sheriff. As we honor our emergency communications operators this week, the timing is perfect to recognize one of the dedicated and selfless operators for her excellence and service to Putnam County. As you listen to a brief portion of an approximate 20 minutes-long phone call between one of our operators and a victim of horrible domestic violence, notice the following. The suspect is still in the home, and the victim is locked in a bathroom. The victim can only whisper to the operator because the suspect cannot know she's on the phone. Her life depends on it. During the earlier minutes of the call, the operator could not hear the victim. It would have been appropriate to assume that this was like any of the other hundreds of pocket dials we get every week, but no. This operator, like many others who answer your calls for help in Putnam County since something was not right, pure instinct, the operator stayed with the victim, ensured she, and ensured that she received the help she needed. You could hear the suspect beating the victim. You will hear the hero in the headset whispering comforting assurances that help was on the way in a manner the suspect could not hear. You will notice the operator remaining silent at times because she knows the caller's in grave danger if the suspect finds out she is on the line with 911. If you listen closely, you might even, I'm sorry, if you listen closely, you might even be able to hear the suspect being tased after failing to comply with the commands of the female deputy sheriff, little poetic justice maybe, the female deputy sheriff who was the first to arrive on the scene. He was tased and cuffed before the next deputy even arrived, but what is most memorable is when you hear the victim come back to the phone after the arrest and thank the operator for saving her life. Let this remind all of us that we are never alone when there is a well-trained and selfless Putnam County Sheriff's Office Emergency Communications Operator on the other end of that phone or radio. The sheriff's gonna play a brief recording of that 911 call for you.
911.
Hello.
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 I'm here.
Okay, I have them on the way. I have law enforcement on the way.
Did somebody break into the house, or?
My husband.
He's locked you in the bedroom? Okay, I have law enforcement on their way. Are you injured?
I am.
You are? How are you hurt?
My neck.
Your neck, okay. Is it just you two there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I can't remember.
You said you can't move?
I can't.
And is your husband on the phone with somebody else?
Mm-hmm.
And your husband in the bedroom with you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Tell me what you, what y'all said when you ran away. Say something, say something.
I'm sorry, Mike. I love you, Mike.
I love you too.
Sorry, Mike. I love you.
Okay, come on, let him.
I'm trying not to.
I'm making a head trip.
You want something, Mike?
No, not right now.
You know what?
I'm, yeah, I'm looking too, but right now, I'm not there.
No, this, yes.
Oh, I can't. Then I do. Three minutes later, it's like.
I'm, I'm hurt.
I'm breathing, that's.
Oh, please, you're, oh, please, you're dying. I'm better off. Oh, 'cause he's after me. I told you, he was gonna be after me. Thank you. Are you there, ma'am?
Yes, I'm still here.
He was after me. He chased me off the porch. My heaven, I'm a jerk. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. If you need anything else, give me a call back, okay?
Thank you. Okay, bye.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Putnam County Sheriff's Office team members, and the Putnam County community, we are proud to introduce the hero in our communication center as Sheriff Deloach awards her with the Putnam County Sheriff's Office Lifesaving Medal, Corporal Clarissa Fleming.
On March 2nd of this year, Corporal Fleming received that call you just heard that was a domestic violence in nature from a female on Mallard Road in Melrose. Corporal Fleming remained on the phone with her for the duration of the eighteen-and-a-half-minute phone call. The female whispered the entire conversation due to the suspect being close by and not aware that she had called law enforcement. Corporal Fleming struggled not only without being able to hear the female, but also deciphering what the suspect was saying in the background. It was obvious this was an ongoing situation between the suspect and the victim caller. There was a point during the phone call when it sounded like the victim caller may have been battered while Corporal Fleming was on the phone with her, and that was later discovered to be the case. When law enforcement arrived and secured the suspect, the victim came back to the phone and thanked Clarissa repeatedly. The sincerity and relief in her voice was what made the call so special. The victim truly counted on Corporal Fleming to get her the help she needed so desperately. The following day, the victim called back into the communication center, inquiring about an escort back to the residence for medication. Clarissa again was the call-taker, and the victim inquired if she was the same dispatcher on the phone during the incident and acknowledged that she was. The victim became a little choked up and thanked Clarissa again and stated, "You saved my life." The compassion and patience that Clarissa demonstrated was incredible, especially given the current staffing crisis in our communication center. Even though there were only four communications personnel on duty for day shift on that day, Clarissa gave her undivided attention to this victim and her needs, and she is thereby awarded the lifesaving medal for her actions. Clarissa, in recognition of your actions during a domestic violence call on March 2nd, your patience and compassion for the victim throughout the call were performed with dedication and diligence. You're hereby commended for your outstanding actions, which led to the preservation of life. Congratulations.
Yeah. You wanna bring your family up? Do you have some family here?
Baywater stay up here yet.
Wow. You got a family here.
This is just a small part.
Could've brought them all, we got plenty of room. Might have to double up on. Allison will get them all straight.
All right.
today. Corporal Fleming is actually the daughter of the late Dan Fleming, and Dan was a longtime member and detective that served with the sheriff's office who died in the line of duty many years ago. It's worth mentioning that Corporal Fleming is a graduate of the inaugural Public Safety Telecommunications class at Edge High School in cooperation with the sheriff's office and was taught by our very own Captain Koleski and several members of our staff. Corporal Fleming graduated from high school ready to serve her community as a fully qualified emergency communications operator and has been continuously employed with the sheriff's office ever since. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic. Okay, thank you, Sheriff, and we'll move down to item E, and I'll ask Honorable Matt Reynolds, Clerk of Court and Comptroller, to come up for some employee recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. That's gonna be a little difficult to follow. Thank you, Corporal Fleming. That was truly amazing. Thank you for what you did. The first one that we have is recognition for five years of service. Ashley, if you will, go ahead and come up. So this certificate of appreciation is for five years of service presented to Ashley Cusack. Ashley has been amazing lately, helping us with some court-side reorganization that we're going through, so thank you, Ashley, and congratulations for your five years of service. And if you will, just hang out up here, and we'll get a group photo in a few minutes. The next person I would like to call up also for five years of service is Jennifer Comer, and we, she'll also be receiving another award in a minute. It's not as, not as good as the lifesaving award, but it is, it is a good award that I would like to give, so here is five years of service. Thank you, Jennifer. And next we have Angelica Bridges. This is presented to Angelica Bridges for her dedicated service to the Putnam County Clerk of Courts and Comptroller since February of 2012, so that's 10 years. On the agenda, I think the next one we have is Employee of the Quarter Award. This award is something that we recently started, so our first award winner will be the inaugural award winner for the Employee of the Quarter. Something, we created a parking lot, or a parking space down at the courthouse for the Employee of the Quarter, and she'll also get a monetary reward for him being Employee of the Quarter. So if Mrs. Becky Viscano will come up. Becky has been absolutely astounding. She has been amazing. As I mentioned earlier, we've been going through a reorganization on our court side, and Becky has done a tremendous job. She has gone above and beyond, and I wanted to read a quick quote from one of her coworkers that had, that had these words to say about her. They said, "I can honestly say that through the years of working with Becky, she is a big supporter for not only me, but others by just showing compassion and kindness." So again, thank you, Becky, and congratulations for Employee of the Quarter. Now, the final award I would like to give, this one kinda just came up recently over the past couple of weeks, and this award is to Jennifer Comer, and let me give a little, a little background story about this award. Several weeks ago, I got a, I can't remember if it was an email or a phone call from Mrs. Frank, who couldn't be here this morning, the finance director, and she let me know that a fraudulent charge on one of the county bank accounts had been discovered and called in time to be successfully reversed. The bank was able to successfully reverse it before the transaction completed, and it was all because of Mrs. Comer and her diligent eye. She saw something on one of the bank accounts that didn't look right, and she said something to Mrs. Frank, and sure enough, it turned out to be a fraudulent charge. And so I thought it would be a very good thing to bring her in and give her an award for that in front of all of you because she was safeguarding county funds, you know, not just clerk's office funds, but Board of County Commissioner funds and Putnam County taxpayer funds, so I thought it was important to bring her down and give her an award for that. And we, we got a little plaque with Logan found, a little clip art of a little fraud dog with a magnifying glass, so I thought it would be pretty neat to get, put that on a plaque for her to be able to hang, so, thank you, Jennifer. And, and we will, oh, I don't see Logan, she must have left, but somebody, oh, okay, there she is, ready for the pictures, okay.
Okay, you'll come up front, we'll get, congratulations, ladies, and thank you for your service to Putnam County.
Thank you for watching, our thanks. Right. Don't come in over. Wait a minute, we're used to going that way, so now we gotta go this way. Okay. Good deal. Congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies. Okay, as Commissioner Harvey says, that's probably one of the most enjoyable parts of this job is to have employees recognized, whether on the BOCC side or constitutional office, we all work together, and we've really been blessed. We're gonna play, take a two-minute and 12-second break. We're in the Board of County Commission meeting, and we'll move to public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It's not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the Board has received no prior information, that's part of the agenda. Any individuals wishing to make comment, public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion on agenda items, and Commissioners will move down to the consent agenda. Any Commissioners wishing to pull any items? I'll start with Commissioner Adamsak.
I have none.
Commissioner Turner.
I need to pull item D, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls.
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey.
I have none.
And I have none, so could we get a motion to approve consent agenda except for item D?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item A, B, C, and E.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to approve those agenda items, we've got a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, item D, Commissioner Turner.
I just need to declare a conflict of interest on this item and recuse myself from voting.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval on item D.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey to approve item D as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second by Commissioner Adamsak. Okay, any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, with Commissioner Turner having to recuse himself. Okay, we'll move down to code enforcement. Mr. Moore.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Ready?
Yes, sir. First case is a property owner, name is Clarence Isom. The violation was unsafe mobile home, care premises, and permits required. The original fine amount was $36,737.85. The total cost of enforcement action was $2,122. Property owner has recently purchased the property, property is now compliant, and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. If the Board approves, we recommend reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, all right, Commissioners, any questions? Okay, excuse me, sir, excuse me.
I have no questions at this time.
I'll get to you in just a second. Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I have no question.
Okay, you're fine. Okay, is the property owner here? Okay, all right, would either one of you like to come in and make a comment, or? If you come to the, please, if you come to the microphone, the podium. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Lloyd Falk, 600 Southwest 4th Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. On behalf of Clarence Isom, who's present.
Okay.
Now, we agree to pay this $2,122. My question is, where do I pay it?
All right, hang on a minute.
We're all gonna fight over this one. Hang on just a second, Commissioner Rawls?
This is gonna blow your mind, I'm gonna make a motion that we reduce the fine by $1,640 for a total of $1,047 to be paid within ninety days.
We on the right form?
I don't know.
Am I on the wrong one? I think it's $1382.
$1382.
I can do it if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reduce the fine to $1382 if paid within ninety days, and thank you, because this is in my district, and I did get complaints about this, so thanks for cleaning this place up.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to reduce it to $1382 and a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Sir, what we've been trying to do is be consistent to, what we want as a county is to get these properties back in compliance, you know, hopefully improved houses on them, whatever, and so we've been consistent to be able to remove the administrative monthly, so that's what we did, so it was $740, so $1382, is your client able to pay that within ninety days?
Pay it today.
Okay.
Right next door.
Okay.
You can go write a check, follow him.
That's a first.
Yeah, but it's the fair thing to do.
Because his offer was $1,500, yeah, so that's a fair thing to do. Thank you, sir, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, next case?
Second case is a property owner's name is 232 Glasgow State Street Trust, Ralph Bonner. Violation was permits required, original fine amount is $123,075. Total cost of enforcement action was $2,687. The property owner has recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and he is requesting a fine reduction. If the Board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Commissioner Rawls? The U.S. First.
I make a motion that we reduce the total fine when appropriate to $1,047, reducing it by the $1,600 and $47.
Second.
Okay, we got a proper, okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls to reduce it to $1047, and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Okay, Commissioner Harvey, did you have, you were up second?
I'm sorry, no, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Turner, yeah?
Yeah, I think there might be somebody here that wants to speak to this one, so I see them acting like they wanna speak to it, so we need to make sure that we open the floor up for public comment on this case.
I will, so we do have a proper motion, second, but anyway, is the applicant or the property owner here? Would you wanna say anything? If you would, if you would, we're being taped, so if you would come to the podium and state your name and address, just for the record, and just speak clearly into the microphone.
Yeah, Ralph Bonner, address is 225 Duncan Avenue. Thank you for reducing it more. The thing is, if the price isn't low enough, then I can't go forward. Y'all have already lost more than $6,000, taxes that can never be recouped because of statutory limitations. We've got to pay $7,000, probably in taxes due now, plus several thousand to tear it down, and it's just really expensive to do these things. So the lower we can get these costs, the easier it is to do these, and other investors can come in and do the same thing. Thank you for reducing it that much.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Bonner, we do this all the time. Our goal is compliance, that's really all we want, and if we can get these fees down, we realize that investors are looking, we also realize there was one down the road from me, my old homestead, gentleman's put almost $80,000 in repairs in that thing to get it back on the roll.
It's gonna be more than eighty when we get through with it.
That's gonna be a tremendous investment, so we know that, and we thank you, and that's why we're doing this as expediently as we can, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we got a proper motion and a proper second, all in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, next case, 2020-00060.
Property owner's name is Bonnie DeBerry and J.A. Musial. Violation was living in RV, permits required in care premises. Original fine amount was $9,218.50. Total cost of enforcement action was $1,405. Property owner has recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and is requesting a fine reduction. If the Board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, before I ask for any questions, before we get a motion, I'll have the applicant come up. Is anybody wishing to speak on this particular case? Sir, sir, wait, wait, sir. If you'd come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Musial. And basically, the last guy said, where do we pay?
Okay, can you state your address, please?
Oh, actually, 120 Powell Drive.
Okay, all right, sir, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I make a motion that we reduce the fine by the administrative monthly, which is $260, to a total of $1,145. Pay within ninety days.
Second.
We've got a proper motion and a proper second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, next case, 2020-00692. Mr. Moore?
Violation was use of structure and vacant parcel. Property owner's name is Louis Pachico. Original fine amount was $7,968.50. Total cost of enforcement action was $1,317. Property owner has recently purchased the property, he's compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the Board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, is the property owner here? Okay, would you like to make any comments? Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the fine to $1167 if paid within ninety days.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, and a proper second by Commissioner Adamsak, Commissioner Turner.
Let me check my math here.
I got $1047.
I got $11, $1047.
Okay, I carry the one.
I got $1047.
Mr. Chairman, the proper amount should be $1,047. It paid ninety days.
Okay, you amend your motion to show $1047. Commissioner Adamsak, you'll amend a second to reflect that? Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave this subject, I'd like to have a very short discussion, if we could. I know that during this process, for the last couple of years, we've been trying to say this is mainly about compliance, and this is, and we've tried, we've gone to very extreme lengths, not extreme, but very valid lengths, to try and maintain consistency through these, and so I guess my question is today, should we, at some point, have a discussion on whether or not we need to just charge the fine as recommended instead of the administrative? Most people, it's not making a difference, but over a period of a year, it's gonna make a hell of a difference in the budget to the Building Department, when this is the amount of money that we use to do, to tear houses down, and to get a lot of these other properties into compliance, is this fun? So I think at some point, we need to think seriously about saying from this point forward that we're going to use the amount that the Building Department recommends without deducting in monthly administrative. I know what you're saying, we do, I think we need to have that discussion, that we do that, and then from this, because when you take a fine that's $124,000, and you reduce it to $1,400, or $2,300, or whatever it is, that's fair, guys, fair as fair can get. I mean, so I just don't know if we don't need to have the discussion and just use the chart that the Building Department has given us, and go ahead and charge that amount, and stop giving administrative at some point. I'd just like to have that discussion, if we could, real quick, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Rawls?
I agree, but, you know, when I first got elected, we had, what was it, there was a hundred on the shelf, and then it was a thousand, and I don't know, you know, how we get caught up, but we don't want cases that are, in some cases, more than a decade old. So it, I just wanna see the county cleaned up, the blight that we have, and it's, everybody has it in their district, and it's spread out through all the districts, is really unbearable. And I think from an owner's perspective, especially a new owner, it's in their best interest for us to get these cleaned up at all costs. I agree that it would increase revenue for them, but at the same time, I don't really think that it's a hard cost to them compared to what it's actually costing the taxpayers and devaluation of property values, you know, we're riding a really high wave right now as far as property value go, but the market will adjust, it's starting to show signs of that now, interest rates are going up, and we really, I think, need to stay the course of this until we can get, it leads to a substantial point, and get a lot of these old ones off the books, and I don't know, you know, how many new cases are being developed a month, you know, maybe with those, maybe if we draw a line in the sand, say any case beyond 2018, we wouldn't do that for, I would be in favor of that, but otherwise, I think we're, we could be working on the wrong tree.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Turner, for bringing this to our attention. I don't have a problem with what you're saying at all. I do think, though, I think some of the reasons we took that off wasn't just for compliance, but we learned that the file wasn't really being touched every single month. So just carrying it on the books for a fee, now if it is, I'm all for it, let me say. If it's being touched and being worked, that's a hard cost that's on the backs of the citizens of Putnam County, and I do believe we need to look at that. I'm also gonna say, maybe, maybe at a certain point, it caps, maybe we cap it at a $600 amount, or a thousand.
I'm okay either way, I have no opinion if we go either way on this, I just think it's time to have the discussion.
I think you're right, and I think that, and I think that that's what we need to do, is look at that. If it's being touched, it needs to be collected, if it's not being touched, then that's a whole different animal.
Okay, Commissioner Adamsak?
I support it. It's simple.
Okay, all right, maybe we can put this on a future workshop, and then maybe John can get together with his staff and just see how big that file is still, so, yeah, big, okay, that's what I thought, so, okay.
Bring them all in, look.
Okay, we'll move down to item eight, Honorable Matt Reynolds, Clerk of Court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to add.
Okay, all right, Commissioners' Board's appointments, Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Commissioner Adamsak?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none. Okay, we'll move down to public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It's not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the Board has received no prior information, that's part of the agenda. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on?